Ball to order. Town of Fairfield zoning board of appeals, November 2, 2023. We have a couple preliminary matters on our agenda. First is approval of the minutes from Wednesday, October 11, 2023. Entertainer motion to approve.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
You guys are gonna get all.
You're gonna get really shut out if you don't move quickly on motions and seconds since you're remote, because I have two board members that are jumping on it already from the gate.
Roger.
We'll have some discussion on approval of the minutes. Harry Nun, I'll bring it to vote. All in favor say aye, raise your hand, Jane and Brian. You don't have to yell out. All right, that's everyone. It's unanimous. And next is approval of secretary fees. Entertainer motion to approve.
The move.
Very second.
Second.
Any discussion? Again, I'll bring it to a vote. All in favor say aye or raise your hand. If you're remote, you can say aye as well if you want. Aye. Okay, that motion carries. We reconvene that after public hearing where all the matters that go forward today will be voted on. Just for more information, there are people that are remote or here on our continued docket, number 144185 Black Rock Turnpike has been further continued to next month. Business on that. And we will go right into the call for the public hearing on an open up public hearing. Town Fairfield zoning board of appeals, November 2, 2023. When a matter is called, I'll be making the call. It's based upon the information on our agenda. During that time, I don't want anyone else to be talking during that time. I don't, you don't have to come up here while I'm actually making the call describing what we're going to be entertaining. When I'm done, you come up to the podium, you can talk at that time. And then during your presentation, you can present anything you want us to consider. You can show it to us. Attorney Gumper put his chair up in the middle to show us some information or you can pass it out to the board members. After the applicant's presentation, I will then ask if there's anyone that wishes to speak in favor of that application. If there are, come up to the podium, give your name and address and tell us your position in favor or what you want us to hear. After I invite if there's anyone to speak in favor, I will then ask if there's anyone that has opposition to a particular application. And that is the time for you to come up, give us your name and address and tell us what you want us to hear about your points in opposition. If there is any opposition, I will then allow the applicant or his or her agent to address those comments that were brought up in opposition. That is a time for rebuttal of the opposition. You're the applicant. You have the burden to present the information for us to consider. So if there's opposition, it's your time to address those, not to restate your application. Okay? The meeting is being taped and that's required by state law so we can create an accurate minutes also and also so we can have a full and complete record in case this has to be looked at by another body. So it's important that we be able to understand the tape, that record, therefore only one person can speak at time. Anyone who does, please come forward to the microphone and speak loudly. We have a new microphone system. Let's make sure we hear you speak slowly. Watch yourself. I'm not going to rush you, so don't rush yourself. We want to make sure everything is clear. I welcome as chairman, anyone who's interested in this to come up and give us what you think about that particular application, whether you're in favor or against it. However, I will exercise my right as chairman to restrict your comments at any time if you're too far off the point. This is zoning board of appeals. Typically, most of the things that come here are seem time someone looking for some variance or forgiveness from a particular zoning regulation. We don't sell. We just have those regulations to look at. You need to buy by them if you think that your particular property or the property you're interested in can't comply with that and you need forgiveness or some leniency as to a particular regulation. That's what we're here to consider, your property and that regulation and how it relates to that property and the surrounding neighborhood. So just remember that. That's what we're talking about. We're not talking about traffic. We're not talking about noise. We're not talking about anything else. We're talking about the property and the regulation and the use of that particular property that relates to the regulations. After the public hearing, we will reconvene our session and we'll vote on each matter that goes forward today. There are two board members that are participating remotely and three here, so five voting members. So in order for your application to be granted, you need a super majority, meaning you need four out of five to vote in favor. If it's a simple majority, three to two, and even if it's in favor, that means that your application is denied. You need at least four to vote in favor of your application for every task. If you cannot stay during the working session, we open it up to you and the public that's viewing remotely to listen to our discussions. It's our discussions, but we allow you to listen. It's not for you to comment even if you disagree with some of our discussions. It's for you to listen only and it's for an education so you can know what we're talking about and may get some insight as to why we decided a particular way. I think it's beneficial to the public to hear that, but no penalty if you can't stay. I'm not keeping track. If someone leaves, I know we're all busy and you might have to leave. If you can't stay, that's also fine. You can call the zoning office tomorrow and find out what happens. If you can stay, even if it's not your application you're interested in, I think it's, you know, a good idea to do so. If the application for waiver is granted, it will do you no use if you're the applicant or the owner unless you record it on the land records. It will be a piece of paper that has zero use. To make it have use and meaning, it needs to be filed on land records and you'll need to bring or send a check to the zoning office in the amount of $60 made out to the town of Fairfield after the, this hearing. Any waiver that involves construction, whether it's a new dwelling, addition, alteration will require an as-built prior to issuance of a statement of zoning compliance and a certificate of occupancy. So our first matter that we have is also on our continued docket and that is 599 Kings Highway West, map 243 parcel 129, petition of Geraldine M. Carlson and Joseph C. Bertini for a variance of the zoning regulations, section 12.7.2 to reduce the minimum lot size from 10,000 square feet, currently 13,098 square feet, proposing 5,019 square feet and section 12.7.3 to reduce the required square from 75 feet, currently 65 feet, proposing 65 feet and section 12.4.18 to allow 100% of the total floor area to be used as residential premises to allow for existing single-family dwelling to be on a separate lot premises DCD zone. And this is Attorney Gumper.
Well, the next one, please.
Want to do them together? Okay. Makes sense. And the other is on continued docket 12, which is a neighboring property or booked by property is 3300 Post Road, map 243 parcel 129, petition of Geraldine M. Carlson and Joseph C. Bertini for a variance of zoning regulations, section 12.7.2 to reduce the lot size from 10,000 square feet, currently 13,098 square feet, proposing 8,079 square feet and section 12.7.3 to reduce the required square from 75 feet, currently 65 feet, proposing 65 feet and section 12.7.6.3 to reduce the rear setback from 10 feet, proposing 5.5 feet, permission to allow for an existing commercial building on separate lot premises in DCD zone.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. I am, members of the board, I am Kevin Gumper. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Holly and Gumpers Dolly with offices in Fairfield at 2228 Black Rock Turnpike. That I would like to submit if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman. I'm here before you on separate matters, but actually they're the same matter. We're dividing one lot into two lots or attempting to divide one lot into two lots. We need variances for each of the proposed lots and that's why we have two applications. I've given you a packet that shows on the first page in yellow, the subject property and in red cross marks are the neighbors that have signed a petition in favor of both applications and the petition is attached. Then for those of you who are not all that familiar with this property, the property runs, has an address, 599 Kings Highway West, as far as the town's concerned. Property runs from Kings Highway West to the Post Road. So it's both 599 Kings Highway West is for the tax records, but the main building is 3300 Post Road. I have a picture here first of the little house, it's not a little house, the house on 99 Kings Highway West, which is occupied by Mrs. Carlson and her family. Next page is just to make sure you're familiar with the property is the building at 3300 Road and I'm sure you understand the picture, only what says Fred Astaire and Matt Ware.com at the building. There's another building on an adjoining property, actually making an L, but we're not interested in the latest act of Matt Ware and Fred Astaire building. Next picture shows from the side, the relationship between the house and the house of 599 and the house at 33, the building at 3300 to give you some idea of how they sit to one another. And then the last picture shows the back of 3300 and the backyard, the end of the backyard of 599. The point here is to show the difference in height between the two. And finally, since this map may be hard for you to see, I gave you a little sketch. I mean, I've attached a portion of the map that just shows the two lots. I'm here today on behalf of Geraldine Carlson, Geraldine Carlson and Joe Bertini, who are here with me in the, in the audience, our brother and sister. They inherited this property. They didn't inherit this property. This property was given to them by their mother, I think 1989, I believe, maybe 1983. The parents have, the mother and father owned the property since 1963. Geraldine or Jerry lives in the house now with her son. His family has lived in the house for past 16 years, with the mother and family, then with her husband and family, and now with her son and his family. The property is, as I said, runs from 599 Kings Highway West to 3300 Post Road. There's a significant difference in height between 599 Kings Highway West and the 3300 Post Road. It's 10 to 12 feet by the time you get to, Kings Highway West is about 10 to 12 higher than the Post Road is. As a result, there is a retaining wall that separates the upper level, which is 599 Kings Highway West, which is where the house is, from the lower level, which is where the office is. That's why I showed you the picture so you could see the change in elevation, get an idea from the side what it looks like. This property has been, oh, in existence since before the zoning, before we had zoning in Fairfield. The house itself on 599 has been erected according to the assessor in, it's about 120 years old. It was erected in 1906 and there was a house there before that. The property on the Post Road has been used commercially for a long time. To get some idea how long it is, the building that was built in the 80s by Mr. Bertini replaced a blacksmith shop, which I think is actually called Smithy. So it goes way back. The application here says a lot of stuff, but what we're actually trying to do is keep things the same. No, there's no building plans have been attached because there's no building proposed. This is just a split of a lot. Why are we doing this? As I told you, the property is owned by brother and sister. Sister lives in the house. Sister would like to continue building it. They both agree that they're getting up in age and that the commercial building should be sold, probably to the people next door since the two buildings to be packed, as it showed here in that first picture, but that's not clear yet. Initial attempts at marketing or exploring different sales of the property in the, that no one is interested in owning, no one who wants to buy the big building is particularly interested in owning a residence and has residential property that would be business property, not interested in buying a property that then has the house on it where Mrs. Carlson and her family live. The easy solution here is to split the property parts along the existing retaining wall, which actually forms more or less the natural boundary between the two and allow the house to be, remain in ownership, in separate ownership from the front building so that the front building can be sold and the house can remain as a residence. Point that out because there's been, I'm anticipating some of the comments from the neighbors, which I've read through. They take that this will be turning, that the little piece will then be able to be used for commercial uses in the future. Yeah, will be able to be used for commercial purposes in the future if you grant a variance. It will also be able to be used for commercial purposes in the future. If you don't grant this variance, it is in a commercial zone. It is a commercially zoned piece of property. The manifest destiny of this house, if it is not, if this variance is not granted, is that the entire property be sold, the new owner will come in and tear this house down and either put parking there or excavate the whole thing to use for additional parking for the lower level. That is probably the most financially sensible thing to do, but that's not what the owners want to do. Mrs. Carlson wants to stay in the house. She very much wants to be able to have the house. She very much wants to be able to pass it along to her son and he wants to live there. I know there's been some thought that if they want to live there residentially, they should put a restriction on it that says it can only be used residential. Well, no, this is in a commercial zone. Son may at some point, maybe 40 years from now, want to move to Florida and then he'll want to be able to sell the property, not as a non-conforming house, but as a house that's located in the zone, a commercial zone for whoever wants to make whatever use they wanted it, which is no different than what can be done right now. You could, they could sell this house and sell the property and someone could tear it down, could convert the present house into an office, could do anything with it. As long as it complies with the zoning regs for the design business district, they will be able to do what they want to do. Really, what we're here to do is to try to keep things the same. Most of the neighbors understand this. I know a lot of the people itself were condominiums, object, you know, Mr. Green is here to raise objections on their behalf. I'll let him comment on his part, but what I'm, I think, well, I'll listen to his comments and then I'll comment further rather than bore you with the same comments twice. Yes, and of course, Mrs. Carlson is very concerned. She would like to know that she owns this so that for her own estate planning purposes, she can decide what she's going to do with the house. That, of course, is a personal reason. Now, the hardship here is, comes from two things. Number one, you've got the change in elevation. Number two, you've got two historically incompatible uses, which are on the same piece of property since, since forever, as far as zoning is concerned, since basically 1900. And what we are asking to do is really just legitimize a issue that's been made of the property for the past more than 120 years. Have one part be residential and one part be able to be used commercially and put them into separate ownership. No change whatsoever for the property. The house will remain there. The, it's a nice looking house. As you can see, it provides a nice look for the people on Kings Highway West. That's why the neighbors that actually live on Kings Highway West of all agreed to this. And it's by some, Kings Highway West screens the back of the commercial building, which is a commercial building. It's not the most attractive thing to look at in the world. And I've said enough at this point, let Mr. Green have one say, and then I do want to come back and comment on these comments.
All right, support. Any questions for Attorney Gumper? Jane, Brian? Go ahead, Jane. Yes.
Hi. So if, if the property is split and the Kings Highway becomes 5,000.
Jane, one second.
I'm so sorry. We're having a concert here.
All right, Jane, go ahead.
Well, here's my question. If the property is split and Kings Highway becomes 5,019 square feet and then the owner wishes to knock down the house and build something new, would they be, wouldn't that be creating a self-inflicted hardship if they want to build something bigger than what's permitted? I mean, aren't you like creating your own hardship after that?
Yeah, if, yes and no. If they want to build anything on the, on the 5,000 square foot property, they would have to comply with the setbacks and the other, the height restrictions and the house restrictions in the design business district.
Right.
Which they would have to do right now. So it's, it's, as far as I can tell, no different. It might actually be, they could only build a smaller building because of the necessity for having enough parking to go with the new house, the new building. What I, what I'm trying to say is that if this little piece could be developed right now, with getting a special permit, they could go in and develop it or, or not. And it's, there's nothing sacred about the fact that there's already a building in the front. We put it in the back at this point to replace the building that's there or to use that building that's there for a different purpose, for a commercial purpose. And they can do that now and if the variance is granted, they can do that then. But in each case, they're still going to be subject to the zoning regulations that apply to the design business district. Does that answer your question or you think, or am I misleading you in some way? I don't want to.
Well, I'm just trying to like think ahead. If, if the property is split and now we have a new piece of property that's half the size of what it's supposed to be and the current owner or even the next owner wants to develop it and will want, will come before this board and ask for a variance, hasn't, by, by our permitting this to happen today, aren't we handing them sort of a, like a, well, I guess if it's the same owner, it would be self-inflicted? No?
Yeah, it would be, but if they wanted to build something on this lot now that didn't comply with.
Okay, right, that's, I just understand. Okay, thank you.
They would have to get your, your, no, they'd have to get a variance from it, but that's why we have a zone. I'm sorry, that you would slide that in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions in the board? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the applications? It's, now it's two properties, but they're obviously tied and it is 599 Kings Highway and 3300 Post Road. Anyone in favor?
Of course we are.
Well, blood of record reflect, the owners are in favor of the application. Absolutely. Is there anyone that has opposition?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Joel Green. I practice along Bridgeport, offices of Green and Gross. It's my pleasure to appear before you this afternoon on behalf of the Sasquatch Association, who counts among its membership hundreds of households at Southport and actually throughout Fairfield. In addition, I appear before you on behalf of the Southport Woods Condominium Association, consisting of 152 unit owners and it's located directly across the street, directly across Kings Highway West, I should say. This application must be denied by the board. It does not begin to meet the standards for the issuance of the requested variances in the legal exercise of the jurisdiction vested in the board. In other words, the rules that guide when this board can grant a variance are not, do not begin to be met by this application. At present, the property is fully conforming with the zoning regulations, except as to minimum square. The lot is too narrow. It won't accommodate the minimum square. The present structures and the uses on the site may continue legally forever. The property owners want to divide the property with a home on one parcel and the commercial building on the other. And I understand from Attorney Gumper's comments that the owners want to actually sell one of the property, sell the commercial building and keep the residence. The owners want to sell the property. The owners want to maintain the landscaping. The owners want to retain existing retaining wall. But as a result of the, of this proposal, properties will become two non-conforming lots as to size. You have a conforming lot at present. 3300 Post Road will become non-conforming as to rear lot setback, where presently is no non-conformity. 599 Kings Highway West will become non-conforming by virtue of its floor area and use exclusively for residential purposes. There are no non-conformities existing right now. So the applicant, by virtue of what they want, are creating several significant non-conformities where none exist. So my clients are opposed to creating a separate 5,000-foot commercial park property on Kings Highway West. It could be developed for commercial uses in the future and, you know, we talked a lot in Fairfield about commercial creep into residential zones. I would note, and it occurred to me as I was listening to Attorney Gumper's comments, for example, and the question by a board member, Gitlin, that this property could easily be developed. There are no side yard setbacks in the zone. The only setback would be a 10-foot rear lot setback. So for example, the property could be heavily developed. I note that recently, the zoning commission granted an amendment to the zoning regulations that allow the first, for example, for a restaurant, which is a permitted use in this zone, in this design commercial zone, the first 450 feet of outdoor dining presently require no parking. So for example, if someone wanted to establish a commercial kitchen on the site with 450 feet of outdoor dining, there is no parking requirement for that. So I offer that as an example. There would be no patrons' floor area. So that is an example of how this 5,000-foot property could immediately be used for commercial use easily by building a building that could easily fit on the site based on its present Attorney Gumper and I disagree, but I believe it would be more difficult to develop the site commercially in its present configuration as one lot. Attorney Gumper refers to hardships as the topography. Well, the topography really does not create a hardship here because you have a home that can be lived in and you have a commercial office building. So the topography does not render this lot unusable. At the end of the day, what the parties want, we have no concern with respect to this application. What the parties, how the parties want to use their property, what they want to do, what sort of development. There is no hardship here and that's, that is the bottom line. This isn't a matter of choice for the board. It's not a matter of what you believe is fair and reasonable. So in your deliberations, it's not, well, we think this is a reasonable idea or, or we like this idea or, and I note that there have been petitions submitted. At the end of the day, these petitions are sort of pointless in terms of the exercise of the jurisdiction of this board. There's nothing in eight dash six, there's nothing in the law that sort of, that suggests that the judgment by this board in finding whether there's a legally existing hard existing hardship or not should be influenced by the number of signers of the petition. Now, I haven't had a chance to review the petition, and I'm seeing it for the first time. I don't know if the applicant is claiming that all of these properties, owners of all of these properties have signed this petition. I can't evaluate that. I don't know if it's online at this point or not. So I've appeared before many times, and we've talked about the ENF decision. And ENF actually involves the decision by this commission, I'm sorry, by this board. It is the law. It is the law. And it refers to standards on which this board can find that there's a hardship. It refers to where the zoning regulations act to render a property worthless, of no economic value, and a property cannot be used by virtue of the adoption of zoning regulations. That clearly has not happened here. ENF goes further, talks about the Stillman decision. The Stillman decision involved a property in Reading where a property owner who was elderly didn't want to move and wanted to remain living in their homes. And in order to do that, they had to put an addition on the first floor, and there were issues with the septic system and locating the addition. And a, the board ended up granting a variance in that instance, the benefit of the homeowner based on personal hardship. And ENF, Supreme Court and ENF said, personal hardship does not count. And Stillman was overruled, and Stillman was bound to not be a valid exercise by the board. And that was possibly addressed in the ENF decision. So the personal desires or what the owners want is irrelevant. Keeping things the same, as Attorney Gumpert suggested, is irrelevant. The desire to keep things the same, the fact that the lots can't be split. Well, the lots are valuable. The lots can be sold. So at the end of the day, the homeowner wants to remain living in that home. I understand that you may be sympathetic to that desire, but that just does not form the basis for granting a variance. And again, my clients have concerns regarding granting of a variance purpose and what the ultimate, what the ultimate use of the property could become. These owners no longer want to live here, no longer want to own it. I noticed something. Can I, can I just look at the large-scale drawing?
Of course. Attorney Green, take, take mine up for your podium, Mr. Gumpert.
Oh, this is great. I had trouble with the drawing on my computer. I think that even if the board were to grant the requested relief, I don't believe that the applicant can achieve its objective because I think the lot area is not calculated properly. I think that the proposed lot of 5,019. Yeah. Appears that the site drawing is not accurate on lot area. I note that there are two little corners here that are proposed to be retained at 3300. There are two little areas on the north end of the property on either side of the retaining wall. And I believe that the way lot area is calculated under our zoning regulations, the area of any lot that is less than half of the minimum square, 75, is excluded from lot area. And I don't believe that the drawing excludes those two narrow areas from the calculation of lot area because I see the proposed lot areas add up to the area of the existing lot. So you grant it the variance, I, I have to verify. But I don't think that they could, I don't think that that would. I terrify that at the moment. But under any circumstances, Southport Woods and Sasquatch Association, which among them have the owners of hundreds of properties in Fairfield, there's this board to basically follow the laws that guide the board in granting variances and finding hardship. And if you do that, this application must be denied. I don't know if you have any questions for me.
The board have any questions?
Yes. So if we deny, and it stays the way it is, can that property on King's Highway, so unless someone purchases the property, can that, can that, what's now residential on King's Highway then be converted to Taylor commercial use?
Technically, it could.
So you basically have the same outcome, whether it's split or not. You still have the opportunity either way.
It's in a designed commercial zone. And frankly, we can't change that. But I would suggest that I believe that keeping it, my clients believe that keeping it in one form of ownership, it, or if the property is used up on commercial buildings, so satisfying some of the other zoning provisions would be more difficult if it was kept as a single lot, as opposed to a separate commercial lot, 5,000-foot lot. And so, and I believe that the topography would help to assure that as well. And while Attorney Gumpert suggested that the site could be excavated out or changed to parking, I think that doing that would present some significant development challenges and tremendous expense. So we believe that keeping it same has a better chance. We have frankly discussed with previously, not with respect to this application, but with respect to a previous application, we had discussed with the owners agreeing to restricting the property if it were divided to residential use. At that time, the owners, these applicants were not willing to agree to commit to that. So.
So that was a discussion? That was an option offered that's feasible?
Yeah. And our concern, again, again, I'm offering this, and I'm not suggesting that this is the reason why the variance should be granted or not, because it comes down to hardship. But the motivation, part of the motivation for my clients is to eliminate commercial creep onto King's Highway West and to keep it residential. And at present, and again, this has nothing to do with the exercise of
Understand.
what you have to do as a board. And I understand that it's difficult, and I understand that you want to, obviously, you want to satisfy neighbors, you want to satisfy applicants, and you want to do the best thing. But the concern right now is that even at present, a lot of the businesses on the Post Road are parking on King's Highway West. Cars are getting parked up there, and it's kind of happening. And everybody kind of sees this neighborhood as transitional between commercial and residential. And they just see this as a further invasion into the neighborhood. So, but again, it's about hardship. And here, there may be no hardship.
Attorney Green, just to follow up on Katie's question. So there was some discussions, and, you know, the people that you represent had suggested a restriction to 5,000 to residential.
Correct.
And that wasn't accepted.
Correct.
And that your, your people think that it'd be less of a chance of that commercial creep by keeping it the assets.
Correct.
As opposed to 5,000. I think you're thinking, I'm just wondering, why don't, but why doesn't the people, I know you, this is our decision, it's curious, is why don't they think if a 5,000 parcel lot has less of a chance of commercial creep than, than the 13,000 square foot lot? Why isn't that 5,000 less of commercial?
Because some of the, because without getting into great analysis, for example, there are limits on coverage, there are limits on floor area, and there's a big commercial building sitting, well, right next to it, on that same lot right now.
Next to the building, yeah, yes.
So it creates impediments, whereas a separate 5,000-foot lot that could be developed commercially would be on its own. And I believe that there are commercial uses that would be a lot of 5,000-foot.
Of course, there could be. I just think, you know, they're.
But again, we're getting.
Within reason, everything.
But again, we are, we're getting kind of beyond the point of my argument on hardship.
I understand that, and I appreciate that.
And it's a distraction, and I hate to do it. I hate having these discussions.
But they all always come up in this board. There's always distractions.
They do, and it's a natural question. And, and we see petitions and, you know, vague petitions, but the law just doesn't recognize any of that. So it comes down to kind of a discreet legal issue. And there's really nothing on the applicant's side of that argument.
Jane, Brian, did you have questions for Attorney Green? Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition to the applications, applications of 599 King's Highway and 3300 Post Road? Attorney Gumpert, could you please address?
Sure.
And obviously, address the questions that.
Exactly. All right. First thing, we had several times Mr. Green commented on the fact that this is what the applicants want. It's what they want. They wouldn't come in for an application for a variance if it was something they didn't want, obviously. Comments that there would be non-conformities created. Of course, there would be non-conformities created. That's why we're asking for variances. Comment that there is, that the place is completely conforming now. No, the house is actually not conforming because it's, that's not a permitted use in the zone. It's the existing non-conformity is what's there. Now, some of the things that he monitored were, he commented on was property for dining. It's a darn good idea. We'll put one in there. You could do that right tomorrow. Anything that could be done after this split could be done right now. The commercial creep. Hard to understand what that is. This is a commercial zone. You know, commercial creep in a commercial zone. The property's been zoned commercially for well over 100 years since we had zoning. Not, not for 100 years, for just under 100 years. And it's, that's what you use it for. That's what we want the commercial zone for. The, you talk about somebody encroaching on its own. You're, Mr. Kegan may remember the condo wars in the 1980s, when it was the condominiums that were encroached, such as Southport Woods, which encroached into the B-zone. Could this property be developed after it's been split? Sure. Could it be developed before it's split? Sure. There's, there's no change here. The only change that I was warning my clients about is that it's possible that when you do the numbers, you can actually put less on 5,000 square foot lot than you could when you have to get your floor levels, your maximum amount that you can put on the property. So you actually probably would pay a penalty if you try to develop this piece as a 5,000 square foot rather than as part of the 13,000 square foot. And the comment that there is no hardship, the topography's definitely hardship, as is the two uses that are non-compatible. There were, basically, you had a zoning regulation that has been imposed on this property for, for many, many years, which has, in effect, rendered the property with two incompatible uses, and it would make most sense to basically legitimize what we have here and split the property along the existing, I would say, natural boundary, not natural, but it's the existing retaining wall. And finally, could the property be excavated? Sure, the property right next door was excavated almost up to King's Highway. And you can see, you can see in one of the pictures I showed you, that's why it's such a, why there's so much retaining walls here because, it's not the last picture, or the next to the last picture. See that? That's taken from a parking lot of the property next door, which is owned by Mr. Hudson, not by the sister, so it's different ownership. But that, that property goes almost right to King's Highway West. And I think that is what the neighbors would really not want to have happen. I told Mr. Green, this is one of those situations where only two bad things can happen to the neighbors in this application, the neighbors that are complaining. One is they don't get what they want. But far worse is they do get what they want because this will be not, not in keeping with their expressed desires in their petition. And that, I'll leave you again, I believe there's hardship. You are allowed to grant a variance once you determine there's a hardship, and there'd be no great problem with the existing zoning and adversely affect the underlying scheme, which I don't think is, we're not, we're not asking for any real difference here. And as I do point out, a couple of things here. Number one, just to go, should have said this before, just to go through the basic variances. The square, nothing we can do about the square. That's basically existing. That's, the square's always been 65 feet rather than the 75. The rear setback from the, from the building, from the front building, the reason we're asking for the variance is to cut the property at the retaining wall. If we went for the full 10 feet, it would, it part of, it would be kind of silly, the trees that are now the screening would be on the 3300, and the other property would be smaller. The use of the house entirely as residential, it's pre-existing, and it's been used this way since, since the house was built. But just, we asked for that variance, if we can grant them, that will clarify it, so it won't be an issue in the future. In other than that, I, that, your time, and I have confidence in your guts.
Bring something to Mr. Gumpert's attention so the record is clear. I'm just going to hand this to him.
Chairman, you can comment or not.
Yeah, I, exactly. I overstated the case. Property in a commercial zone can be used for residential, but it can't be used as residential on the first floor, which is what the house presently does. All floors of the house are now being used for residential purposes, and that's why we're asking for the variance to conform what exists, to have a variance to grant, to legitimize what presently exists. And thank you for pointing.
Thank you. Brian, did you have something?
No, Mr. Green stole my thunder.
Jane has something.
Jane, yes?
Can I just ask Mr. Gump or something?
You can ask me anything you'd like.
So what, why was there an objection to the idea that the condition of keeping that King's Highway West lot residential, why was that not considered at all?
At some point, they may wish to use it commercially. It's not great. Could be just, as I told Mr. Green, this could be just a temporary solution, but temporary could be for 45 years, which would be fine. Might be 10 years, might be five years. But tomorrow, the property could be developed commercially.
Right.
This could be replaced.
And what is the objection? I'm sorry, it's not clear why. It's just a categorical, you know, just absolutely no, we won't do that.
It is in, it is in the commercial zone and want to keep the property with the commercial designation in case at some point they change their mind, which they could.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
And on that point, most likely, I would think, if they do change their mind and they do go commercial, commercial use, it'll be combined with the surrounding properties. It kind of doesn't make, well, anyway, it would, would make more sense probably for this whole entire square to be developed than have a, for the 5,000, but that's how they want to do it.
I'm going to close the hearing on 599 King's Highway West and 3300 Post Road. Thank you, attorneys. Our next item is general docket number one, and that is 1120 Halls Highway, map 246, parcel. is 1120 Halls Highway, map 246, parcel 2B, as in void, petition of Butternut Farm LLC for a variance of zoning regulations, section 5.1.1, reduce the minimum required square for a single-family building lot from 135 feet, proposing 129 feet, permission to establish a single-family building lot, premises double-A zone. This is you again, Attorney Gumper. Go ahead, sir, when you're ready.
Yes, uh, once again, I'm Kevin Gumper, uh, I'm an attorney of the law from Hollyhand Gump &amp; Dowling here in Fairfield at 222A Flat Rock Terminal site. And I'm here today on behalf of the applicant, Butternut Farm LLC, uh, which is owned by, um, Carrick Kenny and his wife Courtney White. And Mr. Kenny is here in the audience with me today. I do have a packet that I'd like to, uh, hand, submit to the board.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm going to say at the outset that this is the single clearest case of hardship that I've experienced in my time, either on your side of the table or on this side. Um, I have to go through the history of this parcel a little bit, which will explain things, I believe. This property is lot B on the map of Helen Garrity, the estate of Helen Garrity. The Garrities own this property and the property on the corner of Cedar Road and Halls Highway. For a long time, they bought it in 1947. After Mrs. Garrity died in 2001, her executors were able to divide the property into two lots because the property was, uh, 2.34 acres. So they were able to split into two lots. And if you look, I have a picture of the map where they, um, split it up. And that map was filed on March 13th, 2001. Most important on this map is the fact that it says it is a proposed division of land rather than a proposed subdivision. That's because this was a so-called first cut. The property had never been developed since the, since the adoption of, uh, subdivision regulations, and therefore, the, then owners, the estate, were able to divide the property into two lots simply by filing a map on the land records, although, of course, they did have to run them by the zoning office to make sure that it complied. At the time, 2001, when this map was filed, lot B and, and lot A, for that matter, were completely conforming lots. Um, the, uh, lot B was basically empty. It was intended to be a building lot for a single-family house. Uh, the, uh, owners, I mean, the estate, then, uh, with the intent of developing this as a single-family house, went to Conservation Wetlands to get a wetlands permit. There are no wetlands on this property, but there is some, uh, wetlands on the property next door. The Massey property, as you see on your map, has wetlands on it. And as a result, there's a 90, there was then a 95-foot, uh, setback or upland review area, uh, that required, therefore, required to go before Conservation to get a permit from Conservation so they could get a building permit. Conservation basically wanted to get a pound of flood in, required a conservation easement that would cover the upland review area. Um, so it runs along the right-hand side of the property, and it's shown on the map here. Here you go. So here is, best if the map is right-sided. So, let's see it this way. Here's Halls Highway going up and down. And this is the, up here would be Cedar Road, and that was lot A. This is the lot that we're talking about. And down here is this area that's cross-hatched, is the, um, conservation easement. This is, the wetland is over here. 95 feet is over here, over to the edge of the conservation easement, and that's why it was granted. The executors at the time said, okay, you want that? We're not gonna build over there anyway. We'll give you the conservation easement. Not a problem. The lot after the conservation easement is granted, which is the second thing in your folder there, um, uh, was, that was granted in 2007. At that point, this lot was still completely conforming. Then, 2009, the commission, Planning and Zoning Commission, in its wisdom, amended Section 12, section 31.2.21. They amended it on, I've attached a copy of the minutes of the meeting where they adopted it. They amended it on February 24, 2009, so two years after they grant the, this conservation easement had been granted, to say that the area of the minimum square required on each lot shall be exclusive of wetlands, watercourses, conservation easements, or any other restriction. Suddenly, by a stroke of the pen on, uh, planning and zoning, this became a non-conforming lot because the wide lot, the best, the biggest square you can fit in here is 129 feet, not 135 feet, which is required in the double-A Property was, uh, was sold at one point to be used for a house, and then builder of the house, the, the purchaser ran into it, a number of difficulties, and was never able to build the house. It's passed through a couple of different owners until it came into the Butternut Farm LLC. And, um, Mr. Carrick bought this, paid a price for it as though it were a single-family lot. And, um, ran it, actually, Mr. Carrick, or Butternut Farm, and their immediate predecessor have run like a little farm. This has actually been, uh, considered farming property for tax purposes. There is a large market, a large garden, and there's a barn, and they grow things, and they sell flowers. And as far as the state of Connecticut and the town of Fairfield is concerned, that's considered a farming use, which is appropriate in this zone as well. Um, that was, uh, you know, a nice idea, and Mr. Carrick was, bought it thinking, I, I call him Mr. Carrick. Carrick is his first name. Mr. Kenny bought it, and with the idea that he could always, uh, sell it as a, a lot, uh, he decided that this was not a feasible business. He determined that it is not feasible to run this market on 1.13 acre, not feasible to run a farm operation on 1.13 acres on Halls Highway. He went to sell the property. He asked his attorney to take a look and see, is there any problem with it? And he got a terrible surprise to find out it, in fact, was not a conforming building lot because it no longer met the regulation. And ironically enough, he had actually, before he bought the property, he had asked whether it was a building lot, but he asked the wrong person. He asked Conservation. He didn't ask building or zoning. So he, here we are, got a lot, it was compliant completely, and now it doesn't comply. And I pointed out, and I emphasized the fact that the lot was a division, the map was a division map, and it didn't go through subdivision approval. And the reason I emphasize that is by statute, if it had been a proof subdivision, then this change in the zoning rates would not affect. But because that only applies to approved subdivisions that have gone through planning and zoning, that regulation doesn't apply. The statute itself says that a use, a nonconform, or any use that you had ahead of time cannot be, uh, eliminated by purposes of, by virtue of a change in the zoning laws. State of, the, our Supreme Court has determined that this has never been a residential use because there's never actually been a residence on there. So again, he's striking out in two different capacities. Uh, but this is a very unusual situation, and it is a definite hardship. He's at the point where he wants to sell it, which he's attempted to market the property, found this problem. It's not put on the market yet, uh, but he does want to confirm that, in fact, he can be, it can be sold as a, uh, single-family lot. And we will, are all familiar with everyone commenting that, uh, a financial loss is not sufficient for a hardship. That's actually not what the rule is. The rule is, it can't, if it is a, almost, uh, is a substantial, if it's substantially reduced to nothing, uh, then the, then it is, in fact, a hardship. And the difference between what you can get for a farm on a 1.3-acre lot and what you can get for a building lot is very, very substantial. And in fact, there is a Connecticut case, Ike versus the Zoning Board of Appeals of the Town of Hampton, where, in fact, the property was too small for the, there was a change in regulations which made the property too small. The property could have been used as a farm stand or farm, which is very similar to this. And, uh, appellate court said, yeah, that, that really is useless. Uh, uh, it makes the property almost worthless being able to use for that. So that case is basically right on point. And, um, I think that's, that's about it. I have given you a, a copy, a little map of the area. The property is outlined in yellow, and the neighbors that have signed the petition, which I've also given you copies of the raw plot patch. And, um, you know, Mr. Massey there is notable by his absence, but, um, he didn't really, he doesn't really abut, so Kenny, when he's going around, didn't, didn't really pursue it, although he did talk to Mr. Massey, who told him he had real no, no real objection. Uh, and that's enough for now.
All right, thank you, Attorney Gumper.
Thank you.
Does the board have any questions for Attorney Gumper? Hearing, no questions. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application? 1120 Halls Highway? Is there anyone in opposition to this application? 1120 Halls Highway? Nothing? Thank you, Attorney Gumper. I'm gonna close the hearing on 1120.
Put somebody else on.
Number two, uh, 78 Saskatoon Hill Road, map 231, parcel 434A, as in Apple, petition of Gloria and Harry French for a variance of zoning regulations, section 5.2.4, reduce the sum of two sideline setbacks, 35 feet, currently 1.5 feet, opposing 21.5 feet, permission to construct a second-floor addition, premises A-zone. Mr. Papa George, are you presenting
Yeah, I can't, I have a problem with this camera, but I don't think it's...
It's on mute, too.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, it's a little light, so, Mr. Papa George, if you could just speak a little louder, louder than you think you need to.
Okay, uh, thank you for having me. Sorry about my camera. I'm a little under the weather, so I decided not to come down and share my germs with everybody. But, um, I'm here to propose a second-story addition over an existing garage at 78 Saskatoon Hill Road. Um, code section 5.2.4, as, as to setbacks, A7, but the sum of the setbacks on the two side lots, they'll be not be less than 20 feet on the building on the first story and 25 feet on the second story. We're proposing a second story over the existing garage. Uh, our hardship on this property is the topography of the lot slopes down deeply to, uh, the Mill River. We have flood zone and wetlands in the back of the property, uh, which caused the existing house to hug the, the roadway. And by doing so, we, it doesn't give us any room to really put the garage in the back or push the house back that's already constructed. Um, they built the garage, uh, for the width of 19 feet about 10 years ago, which is truly not ideal for the garage and also for the above room. Through this, my clients need to use all of the space above the garage and not step it in the three and a half feet necessary to meet the current zoning regulations. In addition, the neighboring properties have received variances. 66 Saskatoon Hill Road has been granted two variances over the years for setbacks and lot coverage. 116 Saskatoon Hill Road was awarded a variance for side setback. Uh, lastly, the neighboring property of 102 Saskatoon Hill Road is over a lot coverage as per the town's field code, field card, with the coverage at 4,446 square feet and a lot of 13,503 square feet. Uh, that gives a lot coverage percentage of 33%, not 20% as required. Um, the homeowner requests this variance as lifelong Fairfield residents and small business owners in the town as they look forward to a semi-retirement that passes their family business down to another generation. Uh, they are realizing they need more space in their home as they will not be spending all their time at the family storefront. As you can see from the proposal, our clients have a current, caringly maintained, modest home, especially on the second floor, which is basically a bedroom and a, and an office for the neighbor, neighbor, for the neighborhood, uh, on Saskatoon Hill Road. Um, they wanted to convert the already utilized attic space over the garage to suit their needs and allow that to stay in their home. Uh, they love for years to come. Um, a denial of this application would, in our opinion, unmistakably be arbitrary as, as it is not meaningfully different to many other approved variances in the area, uh, approved by this board. I'm gonna leave it at that. Um, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Good, thank you, Mr. Papa George. So, board, have any questions, Mr. Papa George? We're hearing, no questions. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application? 78 Saskatoon Hill Road? Is there anyone that opposes this application? 78 Saskatoon Hill Road, ma'am, go ahead.
My name is Christine Mallon, and I'm 66 Saskatoon Hill Road. My husband, myself, wrote the, uh, letter on October 31st explaining our, um, reasons for wishing to deny this variance. And I don't think I need to reiterate anything in the letter, correct? You all have a copy of it?
No, you can give us some high points, not just so you put it on the record.
Pretty fine. Uh, the first said, uh, on receiving this notification, we contacted, contacted the Frenches to review their proposed addition. After reviewing the plans, we informed them that the height addition would significantly block our view around four rooms in our home of the mill pond, and, and also reduce the amount of sunlight on that side of the house. Uh, the, uh, plans that the Frenches submitted, I believe, indicate that the rear of their garage is going to go up over 12 feet. We asked them if they would consider flipping the addition and moving it towards the front of the house so that none of the views from our house, the river, would be blocked and stay set throughout. The, um, views are diminished, and the sunlight is diminished, hence our enjoyment and potential resale value of the house is diminished. That concludes the summary of our letter dated October 31st. Um, I do wish that the Frenches had told us about this before we received your letter. And my husband did wish that he could be here today. However, this was just resolved on the 23rd of October with the Frenches that there would be no change in their proposal. And my husband wanted to be here, but he could not reschedule a meeting in, in New York City. Uh, years back, the Frenches were denied variance. For that variance, we got a lawyer. So, okay, it's just me. So, they did, after the denial of the variance, uh, put up a modified addition. And some of the view of the river from the four rooms was blocked... view of the river from the four rooms was blocked at that time, but it was. Now, the 12 plus feet to be added will morally affect the views from the four rooms in our house. I didn't prepare a copy for everyone, but this is a photograph of the four, the view from four rooms this morning, and the red lights indicate what the additions would affect our view. I do have one question, as I conclude my presentation. Are there any regulations in your clause that state that blocking, say, like, let's say it's a view of the ocean of Fairfield Beach Road, are there any laws that say your neighbor can't block the view, the individual pay for it, so to speak?
Specific regulations in this area? There are some regulations, just back or down at the beach, about closeness to the water, isn't that?
There are no line of sight easements though in town, but setbacks are required for structures, but line of sight. An easement that is upheld or even a regulation.
Setbacks from the sound kind of take care of that, because they're all consistent, you all get to see. So that, that's, that's where the line of sight is a setback on the rear, you're looking at something to the rear.
So, so if those requirements apply to the river?
No, it was the rear of the property, which is that through the river.
Yes, so no.
So this set, the setbacks here for the rear don't come to the front, they're going side to side.
Okay, thank you. And lastly, in addition to views from our house, this, our property faces the French's house on the south, and that's where we have the most sunlight, and that's where we have the vegetable garden, and second picture is to indicate that I'm not kidding, that I That's one plan. And, that's it.
Thank you.
If you folks have any questions, please.
Questions? All right, is there anyone else in opposition to 78 Saskatoon Hill? Okay, Mr. Papa George, you get to address Ms. Mallon's comments.
Uh, yes, please. Uh, it appears to us that the Mallons, they want to be good neighbors, and the Frenches want to be good neighbors also, but in doing so, they only want to be good neighbors as it benefits them. They have the enjoyment of their property and the variances on it to make a very large house with setback issues on its own. The sightline, there's no sightlines, as Matt said earlier, there's no sightline requirements. The Frenches could plant trees, they could, they could do a lot of different things. The back of the garage is being raised by eight foot, and then we have a roof line, I don't know where she's getting the 12 foot from, but also the, in their backyard, there, there's plenty of room for a garden or, and views, but they're, they're covered with trees, large trees, they're actually blocking the other neighbor's sightlines of the, of the same river, so I guess you kind of can't have your cake and eat it, too. I, I understand that they don't want the Frenches to put this addition on, but as I said before, it's, it's not really different than many of the variances that they've received or that the neighborhood has, has been given. I guess I'll leave it at that.
One question. What was the variance that was requested previously? When, what was the same variance? Was it a different variance? When, and when was it requested and denied?
Very French, the Saskatoon Hill Road. The variance was for taking one car garage out and try to put it into car park, so that we could keep the cars in bad weather.
So it wasn't, it was, it was expanding out, it wasn't going up?
Expanding out.
You weren't, you weren't previously denied this variance, it was a different variance. Thank you.
All right, is that it, Mr. Papa George? Thank you for answering the questions.
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to close the hearing now on 78 Saskatoon Hill Road. Number three, it is 146 Sassaipoon Road, map 74, parcel 349, petition of Barbara McQuillan Shea for a variance of the zoning regulations, section 5.2.4, to reduce the sum of two sideline setbacks from 25 feet, currently 14.1 feet, proposing 14.1 feet. Section 5.2.5, to increase the lock coverage to 20%, currently 28.9%, proposing 22.5%. Permission to construct second floor dormers and additions with covered front porch and rear deck. And Mr. Papa George, it's you again?
Yes, it's me again.
All right, go ahead.
Currently on the property, there is an existing structure built in 1958 and expanded in 1978. The existing condition of the structure has side setbacks of 2.8 feet on the south side of the property. For a first and second story, for the first and second floor, a 10.3 setback on the first floor and 11.3 setback on the second floor on the north side of the property. The property also has an existing lock coverage of 28.9%. Our proposal reduces the nonconformance of this property by reducing the lock coverages to 22.5. We are moving 828 square feet of deck and are, are proposing to build back 180 foot of porch and deck just to access in and out of the home. The doghouse dormers on the north side of the property that we are proposing will have a 14.5 setback on the one side of the property and a 17.3 foot combined setback. And, and although it, that is not in the conformance with the 25 foot combined side yard setback for the second story, that is required in the A zone, it is well within the minimum of seven feet, and we have an existing variance on file that allows us for a combination of 17.9 from feet on that combined setback, that, that variance was dated 10/19/1978, which we are within on our, on our, on our proposed doghouses. We have also further, we are also further away than the existing dormer that is at 11.3 feet. The property is neighbored by a 20 foot wide community path of the Lake Hills Association, so it's not abutting another house. And lastly, would be a fully acceptable dormer in the structure if the south side was conforming, but seven feet. I'm not really sure what they did in 1978. They built the addition of 1.2 feet over what was approved, but even if they built the addition at the forefoot that was approved in the, in the variance from then, they still wouldn't have met the 17.9 feet combined that, that is allowed. It is our intention to increase the, the appeal of this property to the town and neighborhood, neighboring community by updating and modernizing the existing home that has fallen into disappear over the years, rather than demolishing and build new. We feel it is a shame for the community and environment to go that route. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
George, the Board have any questions, Mr. Papa George? Hearing no questions. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone opposed, 146 Sassaipoon? All right, hearing nothing, we're going to close the hearing on number three, 146 Sassaipoon Road. Next item that we have is number four, 53 Rhoda Avenue, map 138, parcel 81, petition of Margaret and Josh Cohen for a variance of zoning regulations, section 5.2.5, to increase the total lock coverage to 20%, currently 21.9%, proposing 23.9%. Permission to construct a rear elevated deck to a theme compliant home, premises A zone. And, is that Matt?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make the assumption that they're going to continue. They didn't formally say they were, they were up in the air as to whether or not they had all their ducks together.
Okay.
So no one here for that.
Fair enough. We will do that. Might be notified of that, so I'm here for that, that matter. Oh, sorry, sir. It will, it's going to be considered continued unless it's withdrawn. If, you could contact the office so you don't wait to trip, sorry about that, before the first Thursday in December, sorry about that.
Yeah, I'm just curious, sorry I received a mail, I'm glad I received it.
Well.
December 7th.
Same time, yep. Wrong. But you can call that day to our zoning office.
I thought I had. Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we'll continue that one. Our next item is number five, that is 99 Baldwin Terrace, map three, map 139, parcel nine, petition of Marina and Michael Bresnan for a variance of zoning regulations, section 5.2.4, reduce the street line setback from 20 feet for an open porch, currently 14.9 feet, proposing 15.1 feet, and section 5.2.5 to increase lock coverage to 20%, currently 22.6%, proposing 22.7%. Permission to remove and rebuild existing front porch and stairs, premises A zone. And we have, okay, go ahead.
I haven't been on a podium in a long time. Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the Board. My name is Marina Bresnan. I am the homeowner and resident at 99 Baldwin Terrace. My husband and I are seeking permission to rebuild the existing 10 by 18 foot deck located on the front of our home, which is in disrepair. The particular location, shape, and size of our property exceeds the usual conditions for our zoning district. We are located at a three tug intersection. Our property has two street entrances, creating a pentagonal shaped, pre-existing, nonconforming lot. The new lawn square foot, square foot per dwelling unit in our area is 9,375 square feet, and our property is approximately 60% of that with 5,505 square feet. My husband and I purchased this property in 2021. The previous owner moved some essential property from the area.
Man, true. I don't know how good I am.
People forget to unmute, mute themselves.
What?
That was pre, Phil, the deck was. And we chose to retroactively permit it so we can make the necessary repairs. I have photos of the existing decks, which, which we basically inherited when we purchased the property, share with you. During the construction of the deck structure, we discovered that the required work is beyond cosmetic or just superficial repairs, what is required for the integrity of the panels, but to ensure the safe conditions, the deck framing requires reconstruction. So there are some.
And while we're looking at these, is that, does anyone have any questions for Ms. Bresnan? Questions? Okay, hearing no question?
Hold on, James got one.
Again, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm, well, just thought of it. There's a shed on your property, was that there when you purchased the property, or did you add that?
That was there.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
All right, um, anyone who's to speak in favor of the application, 99 Baldwin Terrace? Is there anyone in opposition, 99 Baldwin Terrace? Any comments? Close the hearing on 99 Baldwin Terrace, thank you, Ms. Bresnan. Our next item is number six, 320 Springer Road, map 121, parcel 28, petition of Frederick Fentino and Seth Park for a variance of the zoning regulations, section 5.2.4, to reduce the street line setback for an accessory structure, proposing 5.7 feet. This is double A zone.
Good afternoon, Chairman, I'm Tim Meehan, Meehan at Rayland Schools, and I'd seen out at Seth Park, would like to build a pool there on a non. I said too big. And then the other hardship that they have is, they have two street fronts because they're on a corner. In wanting to be as neighborly as possible, they put it closest to the street rather than closest to a neighbor. The other thing, which isn't a hardship, but in order to get the pool at that location, they're going to move the septic tank and septic fields back to replace them, and that's, back corner is the only location that it can have. Happily, all the neighbors think it's a great idea. And there's Matt.
Hearing no questions. Anyone who's to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone in opposition? Hearing on 220 Springer Road, thank you. Next item is number seven, 311 Rockbridge Road, map 73, parcel 359, petition of Terrence Otto for variance of the zoning regulations, section 5.2.4, reduce street line setback from open porch and 40 feet, currently 36.9 feet, proposing 36.9 feet. Different second ditch, different front porch, premises double A zone. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. See, we sent there 211 Rockbridge Road owner, he just laid out there, existing porch, we want to extend it a little bit. First thing we really want to do is cover it and stuff, so that packages, they come up, that I get wet, and it's just nice to not have to go out there and mess with the snow and so forth. And in doing that, we want to extend the porch, make it basically twice the side, you know, in the width along the, the building, it doesn't put it any closer to the street. In fact, the addition that we're doing is just a little bit. So it is inside the, the setback requirements, but, but it's a little less, you know, nonconforming when we, when we do this, and the roof that's going to go over is not going to be any closer to the street. We do have a, I'm not sure, sure of the exact real reason for it, but I suspect, you know, you don't want to have structures too close to the street, you know, safety and things like that. There is a, we do have a rock wall and things like that, so it's really not making, from a safety perspective, anything like that, there's no real, make anything different. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Daffell. Is there any questions? All right, hearing no questions. Is there anyone who's to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone opposed to 11 Rockbridge Road application? All right, we're going to close the hearing on 211 Rockbridge Road, Mr. Centon. And our last item that we have today, we take a short break, come back and vote, is number eight, 109 116 Churchill Street, map 130, parcel 49, petition of ACK3 Realty LLC for variance of zoning regulations, section 5.2.4, to reduce the side, sum of two sideline and street line setbacks from 5 feet, 20 feet, and 20 feet currently, 9 feet, 9.4 feet, and 7.3 feet, proposing 3.9 feet, 9.4 feet, and 7.3 feet, and section 5.2.5, to increase the total lock coverage and total floor area from 30% and 50%, currently 38.4% and 98%, proposing 38.4% and 95.5%. To construct two third floor dormer premises, B zone. Okay, go ahead, sir. You can bring a chair like Attorney Gumper did, you're welcome to do that, or put it up there, whatever.
I have a series of boards here to show our also. This is.
Just give us your name first.
I'm sorry. My name is Louis Garcia and I'm the architect for the project. I represent the Mr. Mike Volka who's here tonight. And this is also. So. I know the last one's two percent. Glad that we finally got here. Good afternoon. It sounds like when when determined with the requirement that what we're looking for, it sounds like a whole lot, but it really isn't. If you look at all those numbers that he just talked about, what we're trying to do here is to legalize an existing house. This house has been here, someone said before, for maybe a hundred years. I'm not sure. It's a sort of a neighborhood that that is mostly it's all residential. A lot of them are multifamily at this point. So what we so what we're doing by requesting all these variances is that we're legalizing an existing structure that's been there for a long time. This house was actually built before all the requirements of today's zoning regulations. So it doesn't comply. It probably a lot of these houses on this lot probably doesn't don't comply either. Because the regulations have changed. So the setbacks are required are a problem. The 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 front is also somewhat problematic and so forth. So all we're doing is legalizing. The other thing that we're doing here and the reason for bringing this picture is that all we're asking for is very simple thing is to do what was already approved by this board, maybe a year and a half, two years ago. Same 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 house. If you look at this house, they're almost identical. And and what they did is they rebuilt the house, which I think there was a fire here one time. But they actually put a a a third floor addition on top of it, which we don't have. And that's what we're here for tonight. We want to do exactly what was already approved by this board, what's already in the neighborhood, what everybody loves and cares for. And it's not going to have any negative effect on the neighborhood. You know, sometimes we get all worked up with a lot of numbers and fractions and the law and the requirements and the and it can live with this every day. You make practice the zoning regulations in every town. You're getting so crazy. And and it's just that sometimes we forget the reason why we have architects and and design is to is to, you know, create something that's attractive. And I don't think doing this to this neighborhood is going to have attraction at all whatsoever. So what we're asking for is is something that was already been done. We ask for a bit more value, of course, you know, to be able to create a livable apartment upstairs. And we're going to keep much the the all the facade from the from the bottom down, just like you see on the opposite house. And then we're going to just put this very low shed, low gable roofs on both sides and go up with it. But we're going to keep the gables in front. We're also going to keep the the portion on the back of the house. Right here, right here. So we also understand that we're asking for more value and we don't want to be, you know, to the point that we were just going to be greedy and say, okay, let's try to get as many apartments up here as possible. All we're trying to do is have a livable apartment, two bedrooms, live a nice kitchen in the middle. bathroom is going to stay where it is. We don't have to move a lot of plumbing because we're going to keep the downstairs tenants in place. And then we're just going to come up the stairs from stairs that we have into a living room area, an open kitchen area and two bedrooms. So somebody can have, you know, maybe his and the spouses or maybe an office in the in the bedroom. Something that's commonly done nowadays and something that is needed in the town of Fairfield for everybody looking for apartments. I think Mr. Volka is actually doing something great for the for the city and providing more apartments as so also required. So now you can see that what we also do, like I was saying before, is in the back of the unit, we could have probably fit another bedroom back here if we really wanted to, but we're not. We don't want to be, you know, to the point that we're asking for too much. We just want to do whatever was done next door, which is two bedrooms. We had to two bedrooms right here. And that's pretty much my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Support. Have any questions for Mr. Garcia? Terry?
Well, why wasn't it done when it was approved last time? Just curious. The what?
Next door.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Or next door.
Got it. Any other questions? Jane? All right. I have no other questions. Is there anyone who wants to speak in favor of the application? This is one oh nine, one thirteen Churchill. All right. Is there anyone in opposition? Hearing taking their either. Close the hearing on one oh nine, one thirteen Churchill. Thank you very much, Mr. Garcia. To close the public hearing, we're going to take a five minute break. We'll return at forty to do our discussion and voting on each of the matters. Jane, remember you're third in voting. Okay, we're going to take that same order that we take when you're sitting next to me. And Brian, you're fourth, okay? And Katie's first.
Thing that John Fallon came up with last month. Was this crazy you up with?
Are we ready?
Yes.
Ready, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
Back to order Fairfield zoning board feels a member two, two thousand three. We've completed our public hearing. We're back to our working session to vote on the members of the matters that went forward today. The first matter on our docket was continued docket number fourteen. That has been continued to December. Our next item is continued docket number eleven. We have to take them up in the footer. There's two variances that are related, eleven and twelve, twelve being thirty-three hundred post road. But we have to take them up separately in our discussion and voting. So the first one that we have to take up is five ninety-nine Kings Highway West. Attorney Gumper presented this for Carl Simbertini. And this is to allow for existing single family dwelling to be on a separate lot. Remember, this is designed commercial zone. Entertainer motion to approve.
So moved.
Brian? You just timed that. You saw my lips moving and you started yelling out before I finished.
I was actually trying to be funny and do it before you finish, but apparently that's my lag.
Is there a second?
Dane seconds.
Thank you, Terry. Okay, discussion.
Go ahead, Jane.
Go ahead, Jane.
Well, can I if I can just quote Attorney Gumper, he said, anything you can do now, you can do with split. So that tells me there's no hardship. And what we have now is one non-conforming lot. And what they're what they're asking for is to create two non-conforming lots. That doesn't make any sense to me.
Jane, they're also asking to create a non-conformity of a setback.
Right, but I'm saying they're taking they're just doubling whatever the non-conformant aspect is. I don't see a hardship.
So even.
Elevation of the lot.
Topography.
Topography of the lot was the hardship.
Back.
Whatever they could do now can do whether they whether whether you approve it or not, they can still make the property correct. They can still make the property at Kings Highway commercial. Set a DCD zone.
Right.
It's the only the only reason, the only thing that I can think of, and I'm not usually a huge fan of making more work for ourselves is that we gain a little bit, the town would gain a little bit more control over the development of the second parcel if there were two. No matter what they do, they're going to have to come before us for a for a variance on that second parcel.
How would they?
They build a postage stamp.
How would they? How would we gain more control?
Because anything they do on that smaller parcel, they're going to have to come before us, literally anything they do unless they build something so small. Like they build a shed on it practically. It's a five thousand square foot lot. It would not be significant lot. The lot standing as is, I think, if someone was creative, probably has more options to build across across the breadth of the property than does two separate lots. So if they wanted to utilize the topography and put a lower level and put a so say, across the across the the breadth of the property within its conformity, they are within their rights to do so. If they divide the lot, if the lot is divided, they wouldn't have an option to build something that would span the breadth of the property.
But if you're saying the topography is the issue, once they split the lot, then each individual lot hypothetically has no issue with topography because there's there's no drop between. I mean, it's just they're each flat grant, flat ground.
Right. And that's what I'm saying. We would we would gain. We'd gain two fairly level parcels where one, and I fill things for a living every day or bring in things to level properties and change grades all the time. That if they chose to build something much larger and grade out the property thing, you know, they could do that with two separate properties. They can't, but I'm inclined to agree with you, Jane. I don't see a I don't see necessarily the topography in this in this case as the reason to grant. Though we have done so in the past.
Well, the the practicalities of it, I don't necessarily think five thousand square foot gives us anything to work with because I don't think that would ever be alone. And it would be combined with other lots that are adjacent to it, all in that design commercials district. I don't think anyone's going to even try. So that's why I asked the question following up on Katie's. But what's more important is I don't mind giving a variance because a reduction of a non-conformity can be a basis. I don't think a basis can be creating three new non-conformities by taking making now two non-conforming lots and a non-conforming setback. Normally, we we try to avoid non-conformities. And we encourage people to reduce, like we have one here, that they're taking an entire deck off and they're reducing one. You know, that's kind of what we like to see when you want a variance. It's, you know, using and not creating more. So that's kind of my thought.
I'm also correct in that they were given the option to a condition. They did restrict to be just if they want to use a residential now, they could have de-restricted to be residential, but they did not. And I understand why they didn't want that option is it potentially reduces the value of the property.
Completely understand, but that, you know, when people want certain things and want neighbors, you know, practically, it's not necessarily why we decide, but practically it's important to get the neighbor's blessing, if you will, agreement and can't say I want it this way, but I still want the option to do it the other way. I don't know. Didn't sit well, but again, it doesn't go to the main point. Jane made. I I agree with. All right. Take the vote, Katie? Jane?
No.
Brian?
Nope.
Number twelve, thirty-three hundred Post Road, in and supper presented the other entertainer motion to approve.
So moved.
Terry, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Katie. Discussion? Did oh, Jane, when you said did oh.
Same same thing, same same discussion.
Yeah, let's bring it to a vote, Katie.
No.
Jane?
No.
No, no. Denied general docket number one, eleven twenty Holes Highway, water and farm LLC. Attorney Gumper presented this entertainer motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second? Thank you, Terry. Discussion?
I don't think it exacerbates any problems in any significant way.
I yeah, I think he nailed on the head on that. When they moved that you can't you can't use any of the conservation easement area square after this was done. That's pretty classic, so. Any other discussion? All right, Katie?
We say yes.
Yes. Jane?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Yes, that passes. Granted, I shouldn't say passes. I granted that's granted. Seventy-eight Sasko Hill Road. Papa George presented the application for extensions and remember Ms. Mallon responded in opposition. Entertainer motion to approve.
So moved.
There's our second.
Second.
Discussion?
I don't see the the sideline as being entirely detrimental to the neighbors. I think the the overarching look of the development of what they're trying to do is going to be nice. And I think it's a our favorite thing. I only get to say it once, a reasonable request.
I think they have a legitimate hardship with the topography. What the what other neighbors have gotten in the past for variances is totally not applicable. Their family needs are not applicable. It's it's solely the hard the topography that creates the hardship.
I mean, for me, from a real estate perspective, I'm definitely sensitive to free values based on views, particularly water views. That's a tricky one, you know, if it's if you're adversely affecting water views, water views have a direct correlation to property value.
Katie, there's still a whole, you know, rear elevation to the house next door that looks out on onto the pond. The pond continues on past that lot onto the next lot. So they, you know, maybe they won't get a hundred and eighty degree views, but they're still going to have views.
One of the factors I look at these is you have you're going straight up is, you know, how how much mass are they putting on here? And it's that floor area ratio and it's forty percent. It's what the zone is and it's only thirty-three point eight percent. So.
They're still under there.
And and if you're the mass of a house and how close it is, obviously, is one factor for views, but the mass is also the other factor for views, even though we don't have a sideline, but it's something to consider for the neighbors. But as of this entire structure, it is not there. All right, bring it to a vote.
No.
Terry?
Uh, no.
Jane?
Yes.
Brian?
No.
Say yes.
Sorry.
Brian said no. Brian said no. Number three, one forty-six, Sessa Pequon Road. Lynch Estate, Mr. Papa George presented that as well. It is for dormers and covered front porch. Can a motion to approve? There is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion.
They're reducing the non-conformance.
Well, yes, that's a point I made earlier. Yes, which see it's it's kind of an interesting house for all those houses in that neighborhood. They're kind of like built in stages, spread out. Very reasonable in that area. It's only those formers that are creating one of the issues. Take the vote, Katie?
Yes.
Yes. Jane?
Yes.
Brian?
Yep.
Yes. Number four, that's Rhoda Avenue. And first, I hear, but I apologize to the person that was waiting to talk about that. We didn't know until it was called. Number five, ninety-nine Baldwin Terrace. Marina Bresnan presented her own application and it's to remove and rebuild the existing front porch. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Brian, is there a second?
Jane seconds.
All right, discussion.
She used the word pentagonal. Give it to her.
I was trying to figure out that lot shape, but I couldn't remember geometry from a long time ago.
Yeah.
What was that called? Five sides. But we're talking about point one percent.
Yeah.
Also, she's almost she's at sixty percent of lot coverage. And this is the she that relates directly to that. Also correcting it, major repairs, no permit. Also correcting it, major repairs, no permit.
And it's a, it's an open porch as well, it's not volume.
Bring the vote, Katie? Terry?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Is that a yes, or are you whispering?
Five times yes.
Yes, okay, yes for me, it's granted, number six, two-twenty Springer Road, so Meehan presented this, uh, for Spaccino Clark. They want an in-ground pool, moving the sector to accommodate that, put it over near the road, entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Jane, is there a second?
Second.
Ryan seconds, discussion?
It's on the street side, so that was, um, considerate.
Yeah, put a slightly taller fence on that side for the neighborhood kids to jump in the regular-sized fence.
They'll always find a way in.
That's for them to decide. Uh, bring it to a vote, Katie?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, number seven, two-eleven Rockbridge Road, Zanto, uh, presented the applications to, uh, small addition to the existing front porch, uh, entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
The tie.
What was that?
Give it to Brian.
Don't do that.
Terry, second?
I don't want to win that way.
Second. Second.
Discussion?
This is, this is the time where I get to steal one from Katie again, it's a de minimis request. I think it's, I think it's within reason and something that's not going to have any great effect on the neighborhood, neighbors or otherwise.
Not that this affects, but it looks like it should have been done that way at the beginning, uh, so.
Yeah.
Get to a vote, Katie? Jane?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, last item is number eight, one oh-nine, one thirteen Churchill Street, uh, uh, ACK, Mr. Garcia presented the application. Uh, this is to, uh, the, the new third floor dormers on, uh, property down on Churchill Street. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Brian, is there a second?
Jane seconds.
Jane, uh, discussion?
Kind of hard to say no with the one sitting right next to it being exactly the same, but the reality is they're not exacerbating any problems, um, they're just providing, uh, another apartment.
There already is an apartment, they're just enlarging it, so, yeah.
Bring it to a vote, Katie?
Yes.
Yes. Jane?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Yes. That's granted, uh, that closes the hearing for November two, two thousand and twenty-three, thank you everyone, and see you in December. For anyone running for election, reelection, good luck to you all.